It is 5:15 and we'll be starting the informational session covering three topics tonight. And we'll start off with Chad Ubel from the city of Winona.
Mayor, thanks. Always council members as well. Thanks for the extra time tonight. Appreciate coming in. We're in 15 minutes early to go through this. We always appreciate the extra time. Really, we're going to talk about city facilities tonight in the presentation. And just wanted to give you kind of a rundown of tonight. This is a checkpoint specifically as it relates to the community center. There's there's no action tonight. So kind of always important, at least from my mind, to start with that. We're not asking for any action tonight. This is a design development check-in point with ISG that we promised the council once design development was near completion. And we're at that point tonight. And wanted to start there, even though my numbers aren't in that right order because I want to do an overview of the community center concept as well. And the one of the main reasons to be very honest about that is we do have new members on council. So maybe introduction to the project to to most of you. I know we've talked about it before, certainly during the campaign and after. But also just to reintroduce the concept for the community center so that we're on the same page. So there will be a lot of advocacy on my part tonight, talking about the importance of a community center as well. So that certainly is a piece. I will then hand it over to ISG. Our design consultants, architects on this project. When they're done with their presentation, we'll open up for a short period of time just for real specific design questions. So that when it's fresh in your minds, if there's real specific design questions from council, we can direct those to ISG at that point. We'll turn the presentation back over to me. I'm going to give an update in the Masonic Temple and the HVAC project at that city facility. Turning it over to Steve after that to talk about some other facility needs, he's going to turn it back to me about other broader topics related to facility needs. And then both Steve and I will address some concept that we have for you to present to you tonight regarding finances and a financial plan for these projects. So with that, I'll start with the community center and the concept to build a new community center. And really, we start with that question, what prompted the need to explore a community center and really, why are we here tonight? And I think there's really five key components and there's there certainly could be more. I would just say these are the key components in my mind. It's space issues at our existing facilities. It is access issues at our existing facilities. Has to do with programming needs. You're going to hear a lot about facility upgrades. And then, of course, obviously, when we're looking at a community center, community impact. So I'll start with space. The existing friendship center, again, first floor, the Masonic Temple. Our services have expanded over the years. We've been in that facility since 1979. Space is at a premium in that location. Our wellness center is very popular, overcrowded. We do have a crossover of programming and services at that facility as well, and that causes some user conflict and space issues. And again, if you I know all of you are familiar with that site, there's very little and really no exterior space. There's really no outdoor space at that location for older adult programming. East Rec Center, as it's currently configured, certainly ISG may allude to this tonight. There are some remodel of spaces that are currently underused or not being utilized at that facility. But this facility does house our youth and adult programming. I think it's key to mention this, that it is adult programming, not our older adult programming, although they do use the space as well. This is that kind of that demographic 18 to 55. So we have older adult programming in the East Rec and oftentimes like adult volleyball as an example. And oftentimes that program will go into the gym space and that will cause really scheduling conflicts with some of our youth programming. And so there is a space issue at the East Rec as well. We are currently renting other space in the community to meet our programming goals. And best example is across the street, we rent some gym space at Saint Stan's for some of our programming. And we do that primarily to keep as much of the East Rec open for that drop-in programming and for the youth in that area. And then the East Rec certainly could use some exterior space improvements. And I'll touch on those a little bit in more detail here in a minute. Certainly, the Friendship Center is already on this obviously slide as space, but Masonic Temple needs to be addressed as a whole entire building as well. So when we talk about the community center concept, the idea is, as you'll hear throughout this presentation, it's not just so much about the older adults or the Friendship Center moving into the East Rec or creating a community center. Masonic Temple is also going through review as we continue to work on the arts plan and exploring community arts needs. And so that's really been focusing on creating adequate spaces for the arts or other nonprofits in the community. And of course, as you're all well aware, we've already made investments in that building related to those really performance-based needs. So we've done a lot of work on the second and third floor of that building to provide for those types of services. Access is certainly an important concept for the community center as well. Oftentimes, in this first two bullet points, I know parking comes up. I put parking second. It obviously is something that needs to be addressed in its current location. But really, it's about access and not so much about parking. It's about the demographics and their needs related to parking. So I'm going to see here if I can just switch switch gears here for a second. And take you to a site. So this is a map. There we go. Of course, this is a Google image of the Masonic Temple. Of course, you can see the entry point under the awning for the Friendship Center. And I show you this image because, again, it's not necessarily all about parking. But if I if I'm coming to the Friendship Center and I want to park on Broadway or Main Street, sorry, and I'm coming off of Broadway. I may park by the post office or maybe I'm coming from Levy Park and I'm coming down Main Street and I'm going to park on Main Street. And you might find a space in here. There's there's one handicap space available in this image. But the point why we mentioned access and not so much parking is if I'm an older adult and I may have mobility issues or I don't and I'm just maybe don't have quite the mobility I did when I was 25. I'm parking on on Main Street. It's a four-lane road. I'm getting out the left-hand side of my car. I'm traversing the street trying to find a curb cut. And once I find that curb cut, I get to a sidewalk. I traverse the sidewalk and then I have to go up a ramp in this area to get to the front door. And that ramp that actually I have to traverse is also a drive-through for drop-off services at the Friendship Center as well. If I decided to park on Fifth Street, that's possible as well. But again, remember, you're getting out the left-hand side of your car. And if you have mobility issues, you've got a right-hand turn lane that you're traversing. Again, you're finding a curb cut and then you're you've got an incline to get to the front door. So it's not that great or at the street level. And again, these images are from a nice sunny day. So obviously, not so nice days or in our winter, that access becomes even more difficult. So again, not necessarily all related to parking. It's about access as well. And we talk about access, certainly appropriate financial models for services is important. We have a we have a fee for memberships. My screen's not going back. Let's see here. There we go. So we talk about access as well as it relates to really social and economic status in this community as well. So appropriate financial models for services. We have a membership fee at the Friendship Center. We certainly take revenue or receive revenue from from the county as well for advocacy services. But I think when we talk about a community center concept, certainly finding an appropriate financial model for services is important. And that's something that we need to discuss as it relates to access to this facility as well. Transportation, I'll touch on here in a minute because it relates to both the community center and current Friendship Center or East Rec. The East Rec as it relates to access. And again, I'll go over this more in a in a few minutes as well, or it'll be readdressed in the facility section. But East Rec has also many access updates that are needed. You know, our front door currently doesn't have a push-button button access. We do have some exterior space needs. We have work that should be done within our bathrooms within that facility as well. East East Rec continues to provide access to programming without duplicating services. And that's a key component as well as relates to access. So we certainly we know there's other community programs for youth specifically. And again, we continue to provide those access points, maybe some facilities aren't offering programs that we could, we try and step in and do that without duplicating those services. We feel that's a good access point for for the community to interact with us. And again, we certainly need to talk about appropriate financial models for services if this community center is built as well, so that access to this facility isn't prohibited. And then transportation, again, I left transportation on both of these. Because public transit is something that we likely would need to discuss with this community center concept. If if the community center should be on a route or a transit route, certainly dial-a-ride can happen now. And you can access this facility, but I think it's a key component to us when we talk about the community center that this isn't just obviously for the East End neighborhood. It'll be a boon for the East End neighborhood, that's for sure. But we need to get folks that live on the west end of town and north end of town and south end of town to this facility as well. And if there's transportation needs, then we need to address those as well as we continue to move forward. So again, why are we here with this community center concept? Programming is one of those key components as well. Intergenerational programming, I think, goes without saying, and I'm going to touch on that in more detail here in a minute. I put it as number one because obviously our department feels that the importance of intergenerational programming is a key component to this community center. A community center concept also includes this new gym space. So this and through design development, we've and council has given the okay to continue with a second gym. And if you're not familiar, gym space in this community is woefully short. I would challenge anyone to ask the YMCA if they wish they had built two gyms. If they're honest, I'm going to guess they're going to say, yes, the original plan included two gyms. I think one of their first, at least when they were building the facility, one of their first priority was for future expansion was to add another gym. And so I think that that is an indication that we're woefully short on gym space. Ask any athletic director in our community, whether they work for the public schools, Cottar, the two universities. I think if they're honest with you, they're going to tell you, we wish we had more gym space. Community services, the the community center concept, and again, I've I've been, I guess, really diligent tonight to point out that, yes, the Friendship Center, again, is a key component to moving to this facility. But it is also about other services we provide. As an example, the East Rec Center right now is a vaccination site. Again, if you're on the list, the appropriate list, if you're of the correct age, you can go and get your vaccination at the East Rec. It became an instant, relatively overnight site for that service. And we provide services to the schools and other community organizations as well. So again, it's not 100% about recreation. The other piece that's often talked about is it relates to programming as economic drivers for downtown. And really, I put it put in Masonic Temple. As I mentioned, the arts plan is looking at how we generate more people to downtown as it relates to the Masonic Temple and our arts venue. And one of the components that keeps coming up also is like, well, if we also remove the older adults from downtown, is that appropriate? And I would just leave you with this comment. And this is my own personal belief. But I work every day here at City Hall and when I go to get groceries, I go to Midtown Foods. I'll just be honest about it. I go to Hy-Vee every once in a while, but I go to Midtown Foods because it's right across the street, sometimes for breakfast, lunch, dinner. And we see that same pattern. If I go to the Friendship Center and I work out and I need to get groceries, I go to Midtown. It's real close nearby. If I go to the East Rec now at this new community center and work and work out in a new active wellness center, I don't believe I'm going to magically then go to Walmart to get my groceries. The East End Recreation Center is not Fleet Farm East. It's not La Crosse East. It's six blocks from where we're currently sitting. Those patterns aren't going to change. If I we have a member who remain anonymous, who every time they attended a city hall meeting or a meeting or a workout at the Friendship Center, would go to the Great Hunan as part of their routine to go home for lunch. They grab Great Hunan. I don't think that's going to change if you go to the East Rec and work out. You're going to choose to go to the Great Hunan. You're going to come back downtown and choose the Great Hunan. You're not. You're going to choose Be Noah's. You're not magically just going to go, you know what? The East End is East Rec is so far east, I'm going to go to Jimmy John's instead. I just personally don't believe that's going to happen. So I don't think having older adults move six blocks to the east is really going to be an economic impact or a negative economic impact for downtown. And perhaps if the Masonic Temple program is expanded, it could be a boon. Again, community programming. When we see, again, across generations, the community gardens is certainly one of those concepts that you'll see in the design development tonight. I know, Mayor, I'm not going to steal your thunder. You certainly have an announcement about community gardens. We see that as a place for younger families, older adults to program and really create community within those gardens. And this is also a space where you have national night out or other special events as well. Again, just trying to illustrate that. It isn't, again, 100% about older adults moving out to the Masonic Temple. This is a community space used by all age groups. So another component of why we've gotten to this or we've gone down this concept of a new community center is facility upgrades. And again, I'm going to, you know, here in a few minutes, talk more about the Masonic Temple. But we do have major renovation projects that were completed at the Masonic Temple recently. Of course, the roof was redone. We did structural supports within the third floor. We've done exterior work on that building. The HVAC certainly needs to be upgraded. And in with all of those facility upgrades, we basically have not done any upgrade to first floor directly that impacts the Friendship Center use. Of course, having a new roof on a building that houses the Friendship Center is a good thing. But we did not do any renovations to that first floor. And so that should be noted. East Rec Center, we know that we have, the roof is getting toward the end of its life. Now, in in the review with ISG, the roof is in better shape than we thought, so that is good. But with this expansion, we we will likely have some other costs associated to that building, including an HVAC system that works for the existing space now that may need to be upgraded within five years. Now, we can do some things within the budget to address those, or we can certainly leave those out and just talk about a budget for the expansion. But it should be noted that we do have other facility upgrades at that facility. And then I kind of intentionally put down this, a few bullet points down, is that the East Rec Center is currently the city hall backup. So our safety plan currently lists the East Rec as the backup for City Hall. And if the pandemic has illustrated anything for us, we know that we likely would moved remotely if there was something that happened at City Hall. And we did that relatively seamlessly recently. However, the city hall wouldn't suffer any significant water damage, which we know of has happened to other public buildings. Or worse, a fire would occur. East Rec is our backup. And I say this tongue-in-cheek, but we really don't have the capacity at the current East Rec to, you know, plug in four laptops, much less relocate City Hall. So it is an important piece to the entire picture is that if that one-in-a-million chance, something would happen to City Hall, currently East Rec is our backup. I think it needs some it needs some upgrades. Okay, community impact. And this is the probably the largest piece that I would like to, I guess, in a sense, advocate for tonight. And the community center is really about building community. And again, not only about the older adults moving out of the Masonic Temple. This is also about those young families, teenagers and older adults, and perhaps are most vulnerable in this community, coming to a place. The Friendship Center certainly has been a driving factor for 20-plus years in this discussion of since really almost the day they got there about what kind of building improvements they need to make to provide their services. But the other piece, I think, that the pandemic is teaching us is a lot about social isolation and how older adults are over here and the youth are over here. And we've done that during the pandemic to keep them safe. And some have chosen to stay really separated. But really, it's an illustration of how we operated before the pandemic. We have our older adults over here at the Friendship Center and we have our youth over here at the East Rec. And the Friendship Center knew Zoom long before we knew Zoom. They were awarded through their national accreditation of best practices for their Friendships Forever program. And basically, what it was is they connected our programs to older adults through Zoom. And again, before Zoom was Zoom, they were doing this months and months before the pandemic. And that was great. It's an outstanding service for those that can't come to the facility to be able to log on to Zoom and participate in our programming. And again, that's great. But we want to come back together. And we want to play together. We want to garden together. We want to learn together. We want to cook together. We want to high-five in person, not socially isolated. We want to come back together in person. And I want to leave you just with this for a second. It's maybe hard to read on the screen, but I'll go over it, try and do it quickly. So this is an email that I received on June, whoops. Here we go. On June, let's see, January 24th, 12th, sorry, January 12th, 2021. And it's from the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association. That's our state organization we belong to for Park Rec. And it was a it is a announcement of a class that they were holding, educational session that they were holding. And the title of the education session is, "Everybody Plays a Best Practice Guide to Multi-Generational Design." And the discourse description says this, "Communities are feeling the pressure to ensure spaces are usable for a wide range of users. And our parks are our strategic asset to increase livability, engage, and enrich all ages. By 2050, 2 billion people will be over the age of 60. Research indicates that Americans desire resources dedicated to park sites that serve both youth and older adults in order to experience vitality, combat ageist beliefs, and foster healthy age integration. Through proven best practice design elements, we can strategically use our parks and playgrounds to make our communities more livable and invest in our future selves. And the learning objectives were to identify the necessity of intergenerational spaces and their importance in all communities as our population ages. Also to identify the benefits of escaping ageist beliefs and promoting an active societal contribution to using shared sites and best practice elements to support multi-generational park design." Now, I will I will humble brag for a second. We did not attend this class. Part of the reason why we did not attend this class is because we got to taught the class. We recently built a playground at the Band Shell with the help of ISG. We did intentional multi-generational design. We've gotten outstanding feedback about that project. That families love that park, but older adults are raving about how they can take their grandkids to the park and walk on a stable surface. It's not pea gravel. It's not wood chips. It's poured-in-place surface. I can walk on this without having to worry about tripping, falling, and it's a great asset. It was a great design. Malia and her staff could have taught the class on combating ageist beliefs. They've been doing it for years. And we hired ISG to incorporate design elements that support a multicultural design at this community center. So the question of why are we here tonight, it's to invest in our community livability and to invest in our future selves. Again, that's why we're here, to discuss investing in our future selves. So with that, I will turn it over to ISG here in a second. But before I do that, I do want to mention just a quick recap that prior to hiring ISG, we did do a financial review with Springstead and which is now Baker Tilly. They did a presentation to council about financing options for the community center in the Masonic Temple. Following that presentation, council approved design for the community center and the Masonic Temple HVAC. The city entered into a contract with ISG that includes up to construction documents. So we have a signed contract to do that work with ISG. Again, this is a checkpoint. You're going to see how we progress so far with design development, which is nearly complete. Again, there's no official action tonight. We're not asking for action to happen tonight. And again, just a quick reminder, after ISG speaks, we'll do a quick question and comments before we go on to the rest of the presentation.
Thank you for the introduction. My name is Kevin Bills, project architect with ISG. And this is Ryan Welkey. With me, project manager with ISG. Next slide. So the process began with a visioning session in April of 2018. And the process began by spending time actually in this room with a with a large group of really good attendants and looking at what would a neighborhood, what would a community center, what would this element be to all the different demographics that we have? And then we took that feedback and started to develop concepts. We we looked at a new build. What does a new build scenario look like? We looked at the Masonic Temple. We looked at the East Rec Center. Those are the three primary ones, along with a few other concepts that came along the way. In April of 2019, we spent time, went on a tour of the Masonic Temple with staff and got to meet some of the users of the Friendship Center. Some of the things that we started to see is how the spaces were being used and that the users were using the first floor, which has the large multipurpose space, the fitness area and the main entrance that you'll come in at. But then they're also using some space on second floor, then also on third floor. And so we quickly identified that there are some challenges here with just accessing these spaces. Oftentimes, what would happen for, let's say, an event that was partially taking place on the second floor is you would have event-goers or users waiting to use the elevator with just one elevator. And so after a little while, there's a long line building up there. They're going for the stairs. They're they're making a run for it. And the challenge is the age of this building, it's limited on what we can update in it because it's the historic integrity of the building, of the actual spaces and their relationships to each other is what makes it historically significant. And so that limits of what we can, we can't just necessarily gut the entire building and leave the outside like if if the exterior was historic. It's actually, the interior is a significant portion of the historic element here. So we started to identify some of these things of how the users use the space and put any potential challenges of using that. The multiple floors and things on different levels was was an obvious challenge. Ryan, you can jump to the next slide. Then we also, in April of 2019, took a tour of the East Rec Center with staff and got to meet some users as well. So some of the observations that we had at that time is the existing gym, it functions pretty well. And some of the things that you'll see here, we don't show a lot of major improvements to the gymnasium because in general, the programming can use that space pretty well. We did, however, identify there's a chance to reutilize the remaining space. So the locker rooms are not really used. I think they were used for storage when we walked through there. So we looked at that space and said, hey, there's a chance to repurpose this for a better use. The other part is not just looking at the building, but the site and the opportunities that that presented, just having more outdoor space and what we could do with that. So the community engagement and Chad, I think you stole all of our thunder on this one. But the community engagement component of this, we obviously saw that we have a lot of different users in our neighborhood, the multi-generational component. And so we felt it was necessary to use a variety of different methods to reach our seniors, our parents, our older adults will say, children and our neighborhood in general. And so this is just, we'll call it a laundry list of the different methods such as flyers, web-based survey to really try and meet our community where they're at, to make it convenient for them to give feedback. Ryan, you can jump to the next one. What that community engagement boiled down What that community engagement boiled down to, and I do want to read these, is we'll, we'll call it five key takeaways. Number one, interactive community resource for all people. Sustainability and mindful of our environmental impact. Opportunity for all to learn and play. Welcoming environment for all abilities. And finally, multi-use of all spaces. And that's something that I think is really important and Ryan will touch on that in just a little bit.
So ju- jumping in, fast forwarding here to where, where we're at today. You'll see up on the screen, we have, have the current site, site plan of the space. And I wanted to touch on a few things that both Chad and Kevin kind of hit on through, through our process, starting in April of twenty eighteen. So look, look, looking at the site plan, the, one of the first things that we did was looking at the, the park, parking of the space. Right, right now, we have about eighteen planned parking stalls directly adjacent, adjacent to the entry of the, the community center. With, with that also allows for a specific drop-off area for all users with, with a canopy going directly up to the entry of the space. Another note, what with adding the parking spaces, it, it narrows Zombreau Street. With that, it does, it does a couple of things. It allows us to use the, the current street with access to provide the parking. So less impervious area in the park. Also with the narrowed street slows traffic on Zombreau Street. And then again, we have a couple of concrete barriers that provide, that's curb cuts to provide access, protected access for the users getting dropped off. Throughout, throughout the space, you'll notice several walking paths throughout and not in ninety degree straight angles to provide users access throughout the entire site, site from a hard surface. E- easy to get around the site. All the the, the flexible inclusive spaces are throughout the entire site and the, the symbols recognize some of the space. Some of the, of many uses that could be happening in this space from grass to turf, the community garden, edible garden, and then more of a traditional basketball court, hard surface.
I thought this was kind of unique. Yeah, we felt the staff, the community could really understand and give feedback on what sort of programming or types of events where they like to do in these spaces. And so that's where you see these little icons come in is these, what we did is we designed the spaces to fit the programming and still be flexible enough because of the reality. Five years from now, Chad, you're going to have a variety of different programs, right? So we have flexibility, but we're still trying to be intentional about the things that we can do in all of these spaces.
Move, moving into, into the building, similar concept to the exterior of planning the spaces around, around the programs, but also plant, planning for the future as well and being very flexible. As, as Kevin mentioned, the existing, the existing gym, very minor, minor renovations needed, meeting current program needs as, as it is. And then on the, on the left-hand side, so the orange is all the existing East Rec Center. So on the left-hand side is what we consider major renovation of those spaces to, to upgrade and, and also addresses some, some of some of the capital improvement pieces that are needed that we recognized during the facility assessment in twenty nineteen. In the white, in the, in the bottom half is our addition of, of the second gym, storage, activity room and what, and new and improved wellness center, along with some miscellaneous other spaces as far as restrooms, sprinkler riser room. So improved protection, protection of this building as well. And as, as it notes on this plan, one of the potential construction paths would be the phase one of our expansion, phase two of the existing renovation to kind of keep the facility going throughout construction as well. Wanted to touch on the schedule quickly. As Chad mentioned, we're just wrapping, wrapping up design, design development and moving into construction documents. Part of the construction documents is really refining the design to ensure we have budget alignment with all, with all groups. Review final design to ensure we're meeting all expectations of, of all, all users. And coordinating all, all major scopes throughout, throughout the building. And then developing the final plans and details needed to be able to submit for bidding and, and construction. This phase, we anticipate to be about another four, four to six weeks. We want to provide a, a budget summary. So kicking off following our facility assessments and review of users starting in April of twenty eighteen and at the end of twenty nineteen, moving into twenty twenty, we're directed to proceed with design. That led us to April twenty twenty, which gave us a total project cost of roughly five point four million dollars. That, that included renovation of the current East Rec Center, minimal upgrades to the existing gym and addition totaling of roughly twenty-two thousand square feet. Moving to May of twenty twenty, we were requested to consider options for a second gym. Through, through that review, provide several different options, whether just being a second gym, second gym with walking track. Planning only, just planning the site for a second gym and not, not building that it on day one. So we were directed to proceed with, with a second gym approximately of a one million dollar budget increase. Through that, at the end of schematic design, on August seventeenth, we, we presented to council with our updated design and we were directed to proceed to design development. As we, as we incorporated the additional design considerations along with the second gym, updating our total square foot to approximately twenty-six thousand square feet and an updated total project cost of six point four million dollars. Through, moving to where we got today. We, we continue to meet with city staff and, and users to, to continue refine design. So throughout, to get us to January, layout modifications for improved programming, visibility, adding wood floor into the gym and increased storage throughout the East Rec Center. Also includes some additional site refinement and overall updates for, for space needs. Which would bring us to a total square foot of approximately twenty-seven thousand, thousand square feet and a total project cost of six point nine million. Along with the design development phase, we also had some additional design considerations reviewing with, with Chad and his team of which aren't included in the six point nine million dollars, but a generator for the facility for a backup, backup generator for the facility, additional exterior light, decorative exterior lighting. Also recognize we could also have a deduct alternate for the gym floor to do a similar surface of the existing gym and some, and a canopy structure to protect users as they get dropped off on the site. As I mentioned, some of the next steps from a budget, we need to refine design and material selections to ensure budget alignment, review budget updates throughout construction documents with city staff to ensure we have that alignment and determine any alternates as requested throughout design.
So I'll touch base just a little bit on the exterior images, Ryan. Actually, I'll go one back one. Okay, so the upper left is a rendering of the new main entrance. So this would be on the west side. So this is showing that canopy that will be projecting out towards that drop-off point. The one thing that did get incorporated since this rendering has developed is we'd also incorporate some signage on that existing gym to really create that main entrance point. In the bottom left, this is a view from the, from the east side, looking back towards the building. So this is showing the new fitness area along with that second gym. One of the things that you'll see is we've incorporated natural light into these spaces and views because that really helps that the, the, how we do the, the a variety of programming and functions in these spaces, especially that second gym in creating not just a gym space, but a space that we can use for a wide variety of functions. And this one, I'm just going to touch base on the bottom right image. This is of the south elevation of the building. One of the key elements here is that we have some hard surfaces for outdoor gathering space and outdoor programming space. And we also have an access point on that south side to really connect that outdoor space to what's happening on the inside. Now the fun stuff. But quickly. So this is a walkthrough as you would come in the main entrance into the commons area. So the reception desk was on the left there. This is turning around. We've incorporated a couple of pool tables. This is in one of the activity rooms. So for example, this is showing yoga mats on the floor. And then we also sell some windows for natural light. Reception desk on the left as you just come in corridor going to those, those activity rooms. This is the commons area. And then this is one of those activity rooms.
So next, next steps for our team is moving into construction documents and specifications to prepare for bidding. Next is bidding in, in any city plan reviews and state plan reviews that is required. Award, construction contract and construction.
So to finalize our part of this, we understand and recognize that portion of this council, you're new to this project and new to this process and you're coming into this halfway through. We appreciate the time that you gave us. We understand that you have many needs across the city to prioritize. We've given you a three-year overview in a very short amount of time. If there's anything that we can do, information that we can provide, questions that we can answer, that's what we're happy to do. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Kevin and Ryan. I guess Mayor, if you don't mind, if council has, I guess what I would call specific questions about the design that they just saw or architectural questions for ISG. And again, ISG will stay for the whole presentation, but if there's something fresh that somebody wants to ask now, I think would be a good time. Otherwise, I'll of course just move into the Masonic Temple.
Any counsel? Go ahead Steve.
Thank you. You, you know, I, I don't know what I don't know. So I gotta, I gotta ask the question. And I assume we've done this, but if you could kind of fill me in on, on how you've evaluated usage numbers currently at the Friendship Center and usage numbers at, at East End Rec. And are we jiving and are we, are we projecting for growth? Is there extra? Fill in that knowledge gap for me, please.
Councilman Young, so we did do that through the early assessment before we really got into schematic design. That was part of the research that we did. Certainly we know the numbers. I think what's numbers of members of the Friendship Center, number of kids using the East Rec. There was a lot of discussion about, well, i- is one, you know, one area going to dominate the usage of this building to, to be, build enough space. And so we did that assessment as well about how we schedule and where cross, crossover activities could occur. I think the difficult thing that is, or a difficult element to answer is pre-COVID, post-COVID. I think we all know that that's going to be a challenge. I think we feel strongly with my comments about, I think a lot of people want to get back together. And hopefully we get to that spot again. And so I think that we anticipate our numbers certainly increasing, but I think we built that capacity based on square footage.
Question one, follow-up. Help me understand inter, inter, intergenerational programming. Talk to me about that. I, I've had, I've had, I've had people introduce that concept to me and, and, and express some concern is, you know, is this going to work? So tell me what your research has shown and, and, and maybe other communities that have done this successfully. Talk, talk to me about that, please.
Well, I think it's really important because you've alluded to it, is to start here. I don't think that this building or this concept would be one hundred percent intergenerational at all times. I think that's an, an important comment to make though, because certainly we feel that there'll be programming for older adults and only older adults, and they'll be programming for youth and only youth. But the concept is bringing those activities together, programs together. I, I mentioned the community garden is one example. It really shouldn't be a boundary on age. We should, we should work together. We should grow together, right? We should do those activities together. I think the best analogy that at least I can, I can comment on is it's really no different than, you know, younger kids wanting to hang out with their grandparents. And do you play chess or checkers or cards? Or do you play a different game? Or do you go down to the park? Do you shoot hoops together? It's that it's some of that also just that the programming happens naturally. Some of it is intentional. Some of older adults can provide a lot of educational pieces for our youth. Our youth can certainly provide a lot of educational pieces for our older adults. And that's, that's the concept that we bring these two demographics together. We don't keep them separated. But again, not a hundred percent of the time, we realize that each of those areas need their own time and own space. And I think that's what we tried to capture in the, in this community center.
Um, I have a quick question. Has there been any communication discussions with Saint Stans and how that will affect? I know their, their students currently use that playground under that city facility for their, their playground, their, their FIAED and stuff for all their students there. And with their numbers growing and stuff, has there been communications or discussions with them and how they feel about it or interactions?
Aaron, I have to be honest, they, they've been limited and, and a part of that is I guess just to be upfront is we weren't a hundred percent sure if Saint Stans would continue to be in that location and for how long. We did though intentionally incorporate some of the outdoor elements to this facility, assuming that they are going to be there for a few more years. And whether or not they move to the west end of town and create one campus at Cotter, that may be several years out. So we did incorporate things that, you know, in a loose sense, what's good for a community park space is also good for a school space or usable, usability.
And then my other just last question is, what's the effect on existing users of that facility during that construction? Is there any plan kind of put together for that?
Aaron, great question. And we need to work through that as a staff because there certainly will be some transition. And so here in a minute with even work at the Masonic Temple, we may be, I shouldn't chuckle. We, we may be, we may be moving once or twice and relocating some of our services once or twice, if not more, to get the process complete from start to end. Any other council members have questions?
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
If I heard right here now, talking about the gym floors and replacing the gym floors, the current gym floor that's in there right now, was that not put in just two, three years ago?
Councilman Borzakowski, that's correct. And we, and we would keep that existing gym floor that we just replaced. That stays in, that's, that would not be part of this budget renovation. What ISG was referring to is the new gym.
Okay. And like I say too, from thinking, you know, talking about the past and thinking about it, when the senior center first opened in our city back in what later sixties or into the early seventies, you went there, you had lunch. You probably played a game of cards and maybe shot a game of pool. Since that time to the present, the services and, and the programs for seniors have really, really changed and they really, really have expanded. And I think it's all into good interest for those of us that, you know, as we become senior citizens, there's a lot more here to offer that was not part of it, or probably the people back then probably didn't have any interest in what's taking place right now. But as the next generation comes in, they want a little different. And the generation now, of course, is looking for a lot more activity. Thank you.
Thanks, George. Anybody else have any comments, questions?
Mayor, this is Pam Iden.
Go ahead, Pam.
Yes, this, it, it's good to see these plans again after, after a long COVID delay. But one question that comes to mind that I didn't think of before was, is is there any, is there any coffee shop or is there any place for people to gather and share a snack in the facility? So far, have you thought about that? That's all.
Councilperson Iden. Not coffee shop specific, but I would say there's certainly an emphasis on food and gathering space. Uh, there's, there's an expanded kitchen facility in this community center. Uh, again, on, you know, the the four months that we have really nice weather, there's, there's outdoor gathering spaces for that to happen as well as inside as well, but not a specific coffee shop, no.
So it wouldn't be run as a as a pay your monies, come into the facility, meet your friends, sit down and have coffee shop, or go into the kitchen and dining room facility and not that kind of social space, I gather.
Uh, well, uh, no, we would want to be that social space and, you know, currently the Friendship Center certainly provides coffee and those types of services. But I think, I guess I was answering it more from like if, you know, we were going to have a separate contract with Mugby Junction to be in that in that facility. But yes, we would definitely encourage that social gathering, provide those whatever common food and drink that's appropriate uh in this space to encourage that type of activity, yes.
Good. Okay, that's all.
Any other questions?
Okay. ISG, if you could stop sharing, that'd be great. Thank you. I'll bring my screen back up. We'll go through this next section uh relatively quick. Okay, wanted to provide the council uh an update tonight on the Masonic Temple HVAC project as well. Uh, just wanted to go over current condition. Um, there is no functional HVAC throughout the building. Uh, the first floor will need some repair due to this HVAC timeline. We had thought perhaps this HVAC project would be complete in time before we had to do that repairs. There is a small repair uh to to Aaron's point. In this transition, we may have to do a a small repair just to make sure that the Friendship Center can still operate on that first floor. Um, I do want to mention also in the current condition because this is certainly, it's certainly brought up and it, I I understand the comment and the question, certainly something that council should could could discuss, but if ownership of this building would change hands, meaning if the city would want to sell this building. We owe grant funds back to the state. Um, and so there is, we've got signed grant agreements that said, you know, if this building chains ownership, it's the city's responsibility then to pay those those grant dollars back. And it's approximately, and again, I could get you some more solid number, but it's approximately $300,000 or more roughly that we would owe back to the state. For the HVAC project specifically, we are in current design. Where is a four floor full design for HVAC upgrade. I say four floor because the basement is a component of this project as well. We are currently in the 60% review with Shippo. We're required to do that because of grant dollars that we got. We need to do a 30%, a 60%, a 90% and final review with Shippo. We are just completed as of today, we received comments back from Shippo on our 60% review. The estimated cost for this project is 1.8 million. Again, much like the community center. It's an estimated cost. There could be budget refinements. The city certainly estimates those costs. But right now we're approximately 1.8 million. Quick timeline on this project, the end of March, we submit our 90% review to Shippo. End of April, we complete all of our Shippo and then Minnesota Historical Society requirements for this project. End of May or end of April, early May, we do a check in with city council on the project, meaning you'll see full design on the mechanical components. And then early May, we could uh, we intend to complete a bid documents for this project. So that's a quick update on the Masonic Temple. At this point, I turn it over to Steve. I know that he certainly wants to address some other city facility needs that we have.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Council, um, not to pile on with projects, but um we've had uh some conversations about the law enforcement center and Winona Police Department as well as the fire uh station, central fire station. And some of those conversations, I think, are leading us to a position where we may need to change some of our previous positions. As the jail process has gone forward for the county, they've asked us several times as to whether we wanted to remain in the LEC, and we've always responded that in a perfect world, and if our needs could be met, we would, we would probably like to stay there. Being close to the jail, being close to the sheriff's department, there's some good synergy there. However, we still have needs and that must be met. One of them is space needs and then handicap accessibility. The city does pay rent. There is a formula that is due to be updated in 2024, and I'm not quite sure what that means other than it's probably going to change not to the city's benefit. There was an initial jail study group. Councilmember Alexander represented the city, and their primary focus was on A, if there was a need for a new jail, and then a little bit about what the size of that jail might be. They moved forward on that. And Deputy Chief Engrave has been representing the city on the next phase, which is not only the jail build out, but also some of the LEC issues. We such as our acute space needs and needs that we have uh for other areas inside the LEC. A few months ago, I authorized the city to spend $3,800 with the county architects to conduct a quick review on the second floor of the LEC to see if it could be converted into the s- size of the space that we would need. Because of the way the building was constructed, it proves to be very difficult and almost a $4 million retrofit in order to make that happen. If you look in this picture, you can see the uh, the the um HVAC facilities that are on top of the garage. What we were considering is there a way that you could take that wall and move it closer towards Fourth Street? And it just, the way that they initially built that building, it doesn't make it very uh feasible to make that happen. So we put a small group together in February to discuss the feasibility of staying there or to look at other options. Councilmember Alexander, myself, uh, fire and police reps were in this group. We also met with Ken Fretz, the county administrator, and had a good discussion about what might happen with the current jail and current LEC uh facility. We also met on our own just to discuss our own needs. And I want to thank them for their time and energy. It was enlightening to say the least about what what our needs are and how we are quite a bit off from where the county is going. It appears to to us that it's not going to be viable in the long term for the Winona PD to remain in the LEC. One of the options is to use the existing jail space. If it's not going to be used for juvenile needs, could be retrofitted along with second floor and basement space. That puts our officers on three floors. We're not sure when a decision is going to be made by the county about the existing jail space anyways. Hopefully, we'll be within a few months, but we're not sure of that. The bottom line is the cost to retrofit the existing LEC for Winona PD would be paid by the city through our lease along with other costs, utilities, maintenance, et cetera. And we would never own the space. At the same time, we've known for quite a while that Central Fire Station has been on the CIP for improvements for many years. We're currently looking at at least $2 million, and that's only for minimal improvements. The city for many years has been acquiring land next to the Central Fire Station for future expansion of the station. But this project keeps getting pushed back from one year to the next. The station was designed for operations that no longer are valid. For instance, the number of firefighters that we currently have uh per shift. The equipment that we have is much larger and much more varied. Also, uh, modern stations have drive-through bays, not the kind you back into. And we have lots of specialty equipment that we didn't have in the past for trench rescue, hazmat and other needs. Many communities have looked at their fire and police needs and have found reasons to put them together into one building called the Public Safety Building. The reason for doing that is you share spaces. And it's something I think that, and this small group feels the council should consider for efficiency sake. So unlike um, unlike Chad, we do have one small ask. Our group is asking that the council authorize us to do some interviews with architectural firms to do a space needs for PD and fire. We would need a space need for PD anyway, even if they were to stay in the LEC. So there is some use for that no matter what. But we think it would make a lot of sense for us to at least understand in a generic sense what size facility we would need and how we could possibly put them together uh in one building. These uh studies are generally paid for when the project gets finished. Um, but we can talk about that later. So the outcome would be what we call the block building analysis, just a generic building in size. And we would not want to focus at this time on the cost or the location. That would come later. I think we wanted to authorize a little bit of time, right? Chad, for discussion or Q and A. So again, the ask is just if we could talk to some architectural firms, engineering firms and bring one back for the council to consider entering into a contract to do this space needs study.
Uh, Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Uh, if you're looking for consensus tonight, uh, Steve.
That would be helpful.
Okay, well, I mean, I would, uh, you know, however we do this, I would support consensus to go ahead and enter into that space uh uh investigation that you'd like to do.
Uh, Mayor Aaron Rapinski here. Um, so that's like for the block cost, block cost analysis? Is that what you're looking?
Yes, it would basically say for the operations that we would consider, fire department is going to need X amount of square feet. Police is going to need X and so much could be shared.
I concur with George. I think that's a great idea to go forward with that.
Would would this be a cost estimate as well or no?
It would be very um preliminary.
Okay, I would certainly support this. This this makes sense, given the the status that we're in and giving some of the uncertainty that you've outlined uh with the county.
Do any other council members have comments?
Is Michelle on?
Yeah, obviously I'm in support, Mayor and Steve. I'm I'm in support of moving forward with uh a needs assessment, especially as it involves possibly shared space, which could be shared cost then for some of the facilities. So absolutely.
Thank you, Michelle.
Mayor Eileen here. I'm
Hi, Eileen.
supportive of this as well.
Very good. Thank you, Pam.
Yes, I would uh think this is a very good idea.
And I'll round it out with seven yeses.
Thank you. So our next step will be uh is we'll talk to some firms and then we'll bring someone back that we think would be a good fit uh for our project.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, uh, last slide, and then we'll open up for general questions for all of council on any of the topics certainly tonight. One of the things also that Steve and I would like to present to you tonight, and again, doesn't necessarily need action tonight. We think that obviously to create a financial planning document is key. We work with Baker Tilly um to create that ti- uh type of plan. In the past, as I mentioned earlier in the process, when council approved this project to go forward, we worked with Baker Tilly. Uh, and at that time, it was, well, you you have a couple of funding options just to uh support Community Center, Masonic Temple. And council passed resolutions to continue to go through that process, assuming that we were going to go down the route of bonding for the community center and perhaps taking out an equipment certificate uh for the Masonic Temple or an equipment bond and then reimburse ourselves based on that bonding action. I think with the direction that Steve mentioned tonight with the public safety facility with the community center with the Masonic Temple, I think our next step again is to work with Baker Tilly to create that plan and recommend financial options for us and provide a timeline for the for financing. And then really come back to council, present certainly those findings, but then also illustrate those tax implications. You know, things like, well, what bonding projects do we currently have outstanding and when does that debt service end? We had, you know, famously, uh, we referred to Dieter charts from our old council member, Dieter Millamanka. And he famously would ask for charts from the city about, well, what's, can you illustrate to me what that tax implication is for that homeowner who has an assessed value of $200,000 in their property? What does it mean to bond 6 million? What does it mean to take out an equipment certificate for 1.8 million? And we would like to come back to council with some assistance from Baker Tilly to go over those uh financial plans and documents. Again, congruently, we're going to work with ISG and we're going to work with Miller Dunwoody to continue with HVAC project, Masonic, continue with the community center. But we're going to get to this point where we're going to need to obviously address the financial impacts. So we we just want to make that more as an informal piece is that we think that's an appropriate way to come back to council. Uh, certainly before you would authorize us to go out out for bid, obviously you need to have a funding source in place. So I think it's really important that we work with Baker Tilly. So with that, Mayor and Council, if you have any general questions about the presentation tonight, I know we've got a, you know, we've got a seven, eight minutes before we need to start the regular meeting.
Well, just real real briefly, I I worked with the predecessor from Baker Tilly Springstead when I was in the city of Victoria. We created a financial model. And it's basically your CIP attached to how you would actually pay for things, not just what you write on a on a piece of paper on the CIP. And you could move projects around and see what the tax implications of doing that. The one of the really nice things about working with Baker Tilly Tilly is they are a national and international company. And they they look at projects from multi uh facet way of of paying for it. So we could, you know, we could look at all different types of scenarios as how these projects might get paid for. And then all of the other projects that the city has on top of it, we're looking at Banshow Restoration. You know, there's always work to be done at a wastewater treatment plant and water treatment plant. And so we plug in all of those things from our water funds and 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 wastewater funds, our park recreation funds, and then how these things can be integrated together and paid for. I think it'll be a very useful document for the council, certainly for staff to do what-if scenario practices before we bring recommendations forward to the council. So I would, I would strongly recommend that we that you allow staff to go ahead and pursue this and put this plan together.
Mayor, Michelle Alexander.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Um, first of all, I'm in support of this. Um, I wanted to say quickly because I know we're running out of time here. Uh, Chad, Ubo, ISG and Steve, I was um thrilled with this topic tonight. I thought it was very well presented and very helpful to bring us up to date. And uh, Steve, just for clarification, this Baker Tilly financial plan, I think you indicated it would be from broader than just kind of the three topics that we're discussing now. It would be something that would be used for any capital improvement plans or any other plans that we as a council might bring forward as um of interest to us. It would help us determine financially where we sit and how that would look, correct?
Absolutely. We've used, we used it for um vehicles. We even used it for when to uh put staffing in place in other cities that it worked in. So it it all depends on how on how deep we want to want to dive into it.
Mr. Mayor, could you, could I ask, does this uh financial plan, does it create a timeline? I'm 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 concerned about timeline here. It it's, you know, sounding like a decision is going to need to be made regarding this possibility of the safety building. We'll have deadlines coming up in a community center. So this creates that timeline for us? Is that right?
It will, because you'll be able to see if you do one project versus the other.
All right.
And then the different funding streams.
For me, that's critical. Thanks, Steve. Any other council comments, questions?
Uh, George here.
Go ahead, George.
Uh, do you need a consent uh from the council to move forward with that from all the members or?
No, because it's not going to cost us anything. They're, they put this together for us as a service. You'll see it as we go through budget time and we start to talk about these large projects and how we'll pay for them. So it it it's really just the staff's going to take some time to put this together. I've spoken with Jessica and of course she's got a new team down in finance, but she's excited to be part of this as well. We just got to provide the information to them. They'll plug it into their model and then we'll start moving things around.
Right, I'm totally in support of it, so.
Thank you, George. Pam Eileen.
Yes, excellent. I think we need, we need this tool.
Yes, absolutely. I agree.
Okay, thank you. Chad, go ahead.
Mayor and council, uh, Councilman Young, just one other added point. I think the financial planning also then would illustrate how long you take out this debt. So the timeline also for, is it appropriate to do? You know, this bonding for seven years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. Um, you know, when you talk about a public safety building, we we would hope it would last uh quite a long time, but this this model would also then help determine how long do you in a sense amateurize out this this bond payment.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to thank the presenters from ISG. Thank you to Chad, Steve, all city staff that's been working on this. I think in general, we can all see that there are a lot of expensive projects on the horizon here.
in general, we can all see that there are a lot of expensive projects on the horizon here potentially for the city. It's going to be a lot of work trying to figure out what should get primary priority and what order they should be done. And so I really appreciate your time again. Thank you very much. And we'll meet back here for council in about five minutes.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
I have degrees for the high, the barbecue comes out. Is that your deal?
IT coordinator, just letting you know you are unmuted, just so you're aware.
Okay, so we have what, two minutes, three minutes?
If anybody needs to present, they can just let me know during the presentation.
Hi, Shell. Hi, Laura. Thanks for being here.
Um, would I be able to get permission to share my screen?
Chad should be able to give that to you, yes.
Okay, that was great.
You want to test it or are you starting off right away?
No, they're going under me, under my remarks, Brad.
Perfect. So we will enable that when that time comes.
I'm sorry, can you say again?
We'll enable the presenting, sharing a screen when
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
I think I need the high power ones for this meeting.
Yep, sure do. It is 6:30 and I call this meeting in order. Please stand. We will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council and is being held via conference call pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.021 in response to the COVID-19 emergency. Let me please remind those who are on the conference call, please mute your phone calls or your phones until you're asked to speak. Also, please identify yourself before you speak. As required by the statute, all votes will be conducted by roll call. So each member's vote on each issue can be can be identified and recorded. Also, if at any time a council member is not able to hear the discussion or one another, please interrupt me immediately to indicate so. Also, just a reminder to state your name before you speak so you are easily identified. Tonight, I've got a few comments. First off, I'll start with, the city of Winona has received a bronze level plaque from the Department of Energy's Soul Smart Program. Got the plaque right here. It is one of, we are one of five southern Minnesota cities to be designated thus far. This plaque recognizes the city's efforts to make it faster, easier, and more affordable for businesses and residents to go solar through improved permitting practices. The city joined the No Cost Technical Assistance Program in 2018. And I'd like to congratulate the city of Winona and then also John Howard and his work in the Sustainability Department. So thank you for that. Also, I'd like to, next week is a National AmeriCorps Week. And we have two AmeriCorps members that have been helping out here at the city, specifically in the Sustainability Department. Kelsey Travers is a City of Winona Green Corps member for the 2021 term. She is assisting greatly in research and outreach as the city develops a sustainability and resilience plan. She was also working with Winona County to improve their recycling communications. Katie Granis is the City of Winona Community Forestry Corps member for 2021. Katie is updating the city's tree inventory for public trees and has already visited over 7,000 park and boulevard trees. Katie will be helping with reforestation and tree planting once spring and summer arrive. Both have been active participants in invasive plant control efforts throughout our community. Again, thank you to John Howard and our Sustainability Department for finding them and bringing them on board. Lastly, tonight, I would like to announce that to council and the public that I will be starting a mayor's task force that will be looking at the feasibility of community gardens within the city of Winona. I have been talking with potential members. I have, I will be naming those at the next council meeting. So just wanted to let everybody know that we'll be starting to look at community gardens a little bit closer here. I think a lot of people are looking forward to that. So city managers' comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Lee Gundesheimer has some folks that are going to do a presentation from, I believe, CMAC.
I'm going to turn it right over to Shell and Laura, both board members of Southeastern Minnesota Arts Council who have chosen Winona as the first stop on their tour to promote CMAC to each of the constituent governments.
Lee, can you explain CMAC real quick?
It's the Southeast Minnesota Arts Council. It's part of the state arts board's regional offices and Laura has a little bit in her presentation that will help you if you have any other questions.
Very good, thank you.
Hi, hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for some time this evening. My name is Laura Helly. I'm coming to you from Austin, Minnesota. And I am going to go ahead and share my screen in our presentation for tonight. We would like to connect with you as a council, I guess, council to council. And so I've got a brief slide deck. And we really just want to make the initial connection and start developing a relationship with you guys. So what is CMAC? I think this answers the question that was probably just asked. It was established in 1977. It's one of 11 regional art councils in Minnesota. It's funded through the Legacy Amendment and the Minnesota State Arts Board and the McKnight Foundation. And CMAC makes grants to individuals and organizations. CMAC serves an 11-county region, pretty typical southeast Minnesota geography. You can see the counties there. And these next few slides are going to outline CMAC's contributions to the Winona community. So I'm going to share grant data from the last five years, 2016 to 2020. It'll give you a general idea of the scope of what CMAC does and how successful Winona has been in applying for the funding. So here are the grants to Winona County from CMAC over the last five years. On the left is applications. So you can see that's around 40 a year. It varies a little. The number reviewed is in the middle and the grants awarded is on the right. So very consistently applying and very consistently being awarded grants. Here are the total funds by year. And the five-year total is over $750,000 in grant funds to individuals and organizations in Winona County from CMAC. That's an average of $150,000 per year. And then the success rate. So this is of all the applications that are submitted in a given year, how many end up being funded? Your five-year average is 76%. That's a very high success rate. That means you've got some quality grant writers in your community. I'm guessing none of this is is big news to you. And those are the numbers. Those are the facts and figures. It gives you an idea of the scope. But I also wanted to share a story and kind of personalize what these grants, what these dollars mean in your community. So it starts with a grant, but it doesn't end there. In 2018, photographer Roger Boulay was awarded a $5,000 grant for his photography project. It was exhibited at the Rochester Art Center. That same year, painter Alessandra Suppley, Sopie, sorry, Sopie, was also awarded a $5,000 grant for her painting series called Driftless, and it was exhibited at the Rochester Art Center. It just so happens that Roger and Alessandra are part of the Winona State University Art and Design Faculty. They mentor students and part of that is sharing information about CMAC grants that are available. So just a year later in 2019, two Winona State students were awarded grants from CMAC as well. Painter Ayub Haji Omar. His exhibit Practicing Unity was shown at the Rochester Art Center. And painter Kiran McDonald also was awarded a grant for his exhibit Scrupulosity, which is exhibited at the Rochester Art Center. So what does a grant mean? It's always nice to to know your your artists are being recognized, but it really goes even a little further than that. So when a grant is awarded, artists receive funding, recognition. It's a resume accomplishment, something that they'll be able to count as a great experience for years to come. There are typically gallery exhibits more available or available to grant winners. And there's a potential for income of selling the pieces as well, or just making connections with potential customers. And the community receives the economic boost of the funding, recognition as a leader in arts and culture and helps to attract and retain workforce. Both artists who know that Winona is a community where arts grants are awarded and also other professionals who want to live in a community with strong arts and culture. So here's a list of artists in the Winona area who were awarded grants as individuals. It is a long list and I know that you got this information in your packet, so I am not going to read through it. And here's organizations. And one thing that is notable is that there were actually three grants over the last five years awarded to the city of Winona as an organization applying to CMAC. So we're already your partners and we want to really strengthen that connection. And again, you have all this information. Either you have it or Lee will get it to you momentarily. So I'm not going to go through it individually. So what is our ask tonight? We want to stay connected to you as leaders in your community. We want to build relationship and strengthen our regional connections. And then we also want to leverage the arts to improve communities. Winona knows that the arts are a great economic driver and good for their community. We know that too. And we want to just continue to move the needle there. And so specifically, we want to connect to artists. Here in Minnesota, sometimes we are very humble and we don't want to necessarily identify with the title of artist. So also known as creatives, makers, musicians, hobbyists, designers, not necessarily people who are making a living in the arts. And then also, we are really focused on traditionally unserved or underserved community members, Black, Indigenous, Asian, Latinx, low-income, English language learners, the disabled, et cetera. So that's our ask. We really want to connect to you and connect to the artists in your community. And I'm going to call on my colleague Shell. And he is really good at filling in where I left out some information. So go ahead.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Shell Granalchay. I serve Economic Development Needs in Lake City, up the river from you all. It's a pleasure to be with you. I've served as the Wabashak County Rep on the CMAC Board for a number of years. And in my previous career, I actually taught at both of the four-year universities in Winona. And I just want to applaud you all. You have had five years, you saw in the documentation, of really successful grant acquisition through CMAC. Three quarters of a million dollars is nothing to sneeze at. And the the role that these artists are playing in Winona, from my perspective, is a significant economic boost. Each of these art studios, whether they be full-time, focused professionals who are earning their entire living through their practice or just part-time hobbyists, they are contributing to a larger, healthier economy in Winona. So as Laura said, we're here to simply make the connection. We want to make sure that you understand that we are paying attention to you, that we see the success in Winona from city government and nonprofits and in the open market. And if we can be of greater service or make larger connections, we're very much open to that. I think at this point, we'll just take questions. We want to be mindful of your time.
Any council members have questions of them? Hearing none, I'd like to just say Laura and Shell, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Obviously, a lot of the work's been done by community members, by the artists and performing arts people within the community. Thank you. Steve, do you have any other comments?
Just just one, Your Honor. They cited two examples of professors from Winona State. It'd sure be nice when they get to show their show their exhibits here in Winona and not in Rochester.
That would be awesome. Very good. Thank you again. Steve, anything else this evening? Okay. I will now ask the city clerk to take roll call. Members of the city council who are either present in the council chambers or participating by conference call, please indicate your presence by stating here as the city clerk calls your name.
Mayor Scott Sherman.
Here.
Councilman Young.
Here.
Moller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Aiden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Here.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is a massage therapy license for Diane Coats.
I am Michelle Alexander. Move approval of that license.
I hear and second that. We have a motion by Michelle and a second by Aaron. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilman Young.
Hi.
Moller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi. Motion passes.
Item 3.2 Item 3.2 is the application for on-sale intoxicating liquor license for 501 Olmsted Properties doing business as Cornerstone Bar.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Move approval of that application.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second by Eileen. Any discussion?
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Just a question. I know approving these licenses for, for many years and it come across in application for on-sale intoxicating liquor license. Do we have to have the word intoxicating in there? You know, everybody does not go out and get intoxicated. Just wondering, I mean, you know, is there a way that that word could be removed and the rest of the verbiage is fine?
Mayor and Council, these are retail classes that are in state law.
Thank you.
To your senator.
All your state senator, George. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilman Young.
Hi.
Moller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi. Motion passes.
Item 3.3 is the application for on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Sloppy Joes.
George moves to approve the license.
Aaron will second that. George made the motion and Aaron seconded it. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilman Young.
Hi.
Moller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi. Motion passes.
Under the unfinished business, item 4.1 is to award the contract for the Children's Library renovation project to the low bidder Simmons Construction with a bid of $93,000.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Would make a motion to adopt the attached resolution awarding the contract to Simmons Construction.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second by Eileen. Any discussion on this topic?
Alexander.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Leslie, are you on? Or Chad, can someone answer my question?
Leslie's here.
Okay. Oh, hi, Leslie. Hi. Leslie, it seems like this has been an ongoing problem for the Children's Library. Is this going to complete the renovation and the repair we needed to stop water infiltrating? Or do you think we're gonna have more problems?
This is the last phase of a multiple-year water intrusion project. So, hopefully, this takes care of the foundation water intrusion. There is still some water intrusion work to do at the roof line.
Sure. So, once this is done and you've, we've gone to years where we've made repairs, we haven't seen a recurrence of intrusion. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, then it's just dealing with the roof. Is that gonna be like gutter system? What would that look like?
I don't know yet. It was, it was at the cornices. Moisture above and below the roof line was how it was stated in the Historic Structure Report.
Okay. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other questions? Any discussion?
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Whoever can answer, has this Simmons Construction worked for us before and where are they from?
Councilman George, I can tell you what I know. They are out of Holman and they are currently working on the old central school building.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilman Young.
Hi.
Moller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi. Motion passes.
Under the new business, item 5.1 is the certified local grant application for 2021.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Would make a motion to authorize staff to apply for the grant.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second by Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilman Young.
Hi.
Moller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi. Motion passes.
Item 5.2 is a request for proposals for engineering of the Gilmore Creek Levy improvements.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Would make a motion to the attached resolution.
Second. We have a motion by Michelle and a second by Steve Young. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I researched this a bit and, you know, this, this really comes across as a, likely a no-cost improvement to our levy system. We're applying for a grant and then we would then hopefully be able to receive state bond money for the rest. And so, we're, we're thinking again, no-cost improvement to the levy system. So.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilman Young.
Hi.
Moller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi. Motion passes.
Item 5.3 is the bridge replacement grant for a bridge on Westlake Boulevard.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second by Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilman Young.
Hi.
Moller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi. Motion passes.
Item 5.4 is a request by Woodlawn Cemetery to assist with the selective harvesting cleanup.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Would make a motion to deny this request.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second by Eileen to deny the request. Any discussion at all? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Young.
Hi.
Moller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden. Borzakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi. Motion is denied.
Item 5.5 is the Teamsters Local 120 Agreement for '21 and '22.
George to approve the attached resolution approving the contract.
Michelle Alexander will second.
We have a motion by George and a second by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilman Young.
Hi.
Moller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi. Motion passes.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
We'll start with Councilman Borzakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little information. Today in the state of Illinois is Casimir Pulaski Day. It is celebrated on the first Monday of every March in memory of Casimir Pulaski. Born March 6, 1745, died October 11, 1779. He was a Revolutionary War cavalry officer, born in Poland. And he is, his traits are, he is praised for his contributions to the US military in the American Revolution and known as the father of the American cavalry. So, the first Monday in March of every year is Casimir Pulaski Day in the state of Illinois, especially in the Polish neighborhoods. I know, just, I know we all wanted to, was, was questioning that. So. And then, just on a sad note, I would like to offer condolences to the Weaver family on Barky's passing. Barky, who operated Weaver and Sons with his brother and sister for many years. And he has many gallons of paint spread in this town from Peerless Chain all the way out to St. Mary's University. And very much involved in his church and very, very good businessman and a very, very good individual. So, condolences to his family. Also to the Stark family on the passing of their mother, Arlene, who lived to the good old age of 93 and wished their family well as they began to put their lives back together. And also to Chad Woodford, condolences to him on the passing of his friend Devon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Councilperson Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna wish condolences to the John Denzer family. He passed away over the last week and they had a service for him this weekend. He was a community member, a member of St. Casimir's Church, probably worked in multiple morgues and funeral homes. Was a good friend and often came in to share his thoughts on the city and I'm gonna greatly miss him. And I think his community of friends will greatly miss him as well. And then I just wanted to thank you, Mayor, for coming up with a task force to look at community gardens. I think that's amazing and I hope it's something that your group will look to spread throughout the entire community as we have abundant parklands ready to utilize. So, I was really pleased to hear that. So, thank you for doing that.
Absolutely. Thanks, Michelle. Anything else, Michelle?
No, that is all except for, it's like spring, people. It's spring. I'm just giddy about it.
I think we all are. All right, councilperson Aiden, please.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Councilperson Moller.
I just want to echo Councilwoman Alexander. I am so, so excited that we are going to look at community gardens. I look forward to the one that is sure to end up on the west side of town. Yes. I think most folks know I'm a very, very passionate gardener. So, I'm so over the moon about this. It's something that I have been talking about for many years. So, yay, hooray. And can confirm for George that Casimir Pulaski Day is a big day in Illinois as someone who grew up in Illinois, among many Polish community members, that it's, it's a big day. So, happy Casimir Pulaski if there are any other Chicagoland folks in Winona, in Winona.
Eileen, Eileen.
Yeah.
This is Zach Kaiser with the, with the Post. What is your cat's name? The public wants to know.
This is Wesley. He's the honorary eighth council member. He's been at every meeting since the pandemic started. And he's from the Winona Humane Society.
Oh.
Okay. Thank you, Eileen. We'll go to councilperson Young, please.
Yeah, spring is here. It means the, the ski season is over. The cross-country ski season at St. Mary's is over. We had a great season. I, I help out with the team there. I got about 40 kids that we coached. And we had nine brand-new skiers this year and we just concluded, or we're just concluding our season this week. And really appreciate the partnership that we have between St. Mary's and City of Winona to provide those, those resources and that, that space for kids to ski and, and the whole community to ski. So.
Absolutely.
That's right.
Thank you, Steve. Councilperson Rapinski.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate on a somber note, the condolences for the unexpected death of a family member to Ty and Lindsay Styx and of course Chad Woodford and his family. On, on a positive note, I had the opportunity about last Thursday by Sobieski Lodge in the east end. I was, I was driving by in the morning. I saw a healthcare sign. And I wasn't aware of it. So, I had the opportunity to go in and wanna say thank you and kudos, of course, to Bridges Health. And I understand they were operating at the Friendship Center for a while, but they're open. To educate me on that, I had the chance to meet with Anna Houseseal, who's a social work student, and Amy Kaler, who's a nursing faculty. And it is essentially a free health service, a free clinic, if you will. Health screenings, foot and nail care, neck and shoulder massages, blood pressure checks, chronic condition support, medication reviews, caring calls and so on, that's offered from Bridges Health. And I was unaware of that service in Winona. I know it happens on Thursdays at Sobieski Lodge from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, I believe, and it's through the Friendship Center. And I just wanna say thank you to those folks for doing that and putting the time and effort and volunteerism into that. So, thank you, folks.
Absolutely. Sounds like a phenomenal program and I'm glad you brought it to the meeting. Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda, there are two items. Approval of the minutes from February 16th. And the final adoption of an ordinance to vacate the alley on block two of the plumbers' addition.
George moves to approve the consent agenda.
Michelle will second.
George with the motion and Michelle seconded it. We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilman Young.
Hi.
Moller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi. Motion passes.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
George will second that.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second by George to adjourn. We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilman Young.
Hi.
Moller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi. Meeting is adjourned.
Mayor George.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. What's that, George?
Can you hear me yet?
Yes, sir, I can.
I was just talking about the community gardens. I know down in the east end of Winona.